Irene's asleep, she just woke up.
She's sick.
My, my parents have the flu.
It's crazy.
I had that last year, after good for ten years, in my opinion.
I now call order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, March 3rd, 2015 at 6:30, roll call.
Mayor Archie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Larson.
Here.
Commissioner Terrapini is absent and excused. Commissioner Banther.
Here.
And Commissioner Seber is absent and excused.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Kurt Snerre of St. Timothy Lutheran. Will everyone stand, please remain standing for the pledge of allegiance following.
Heavenly Father, we give you thanks and we honor you. We thank you for this day, and we thank you for this city that you've given to us. Guide us to be good stewards. Bless our city. We pray that you would guide our commissioners and our mayor this night, that they may lead us in decisions that are wise. Give them your counsel. We offer all of this in the name of the Most High God, the Father, the Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, we would now go to public comments on items that would not be discussed this evening. Seeing none, we'll go to proclamation. The first one is, uh, myeloma, uh, awareness month. This proclamation we read, excuse me. Whereas multiple myeloma, or myeloma, the second most common blood cancer where, uh, worldwide is a cancer plasma cells in the bone marrow. It is called multiple because the cancer can occur at multiple sites. And whereas multiple myeloma, uh, currently affects more than 100,000 people in the United States, with, with an estimated two, uh, 20,000 new cases diagnosed each year, 10,000 losing their bowel each year. Whereas once a disease of the elderly, it is now found in increasing number of people under 65. And whereas because myeloma is a rare disease, there can be a delayed diagnosis leading to delayed treatment. For this reason, an increased awareness of myeloma for clinicians and the general public will lead to earlier diagnosis, allowing people to live longer. Whereas continued investment in innovation is critical to achieve early diagnosis and implement the most effective and safest treatments for myeloma patients. And whereas although we have seen, uh, important advances in the last decade, there is still no cure for myeloma. And whereas the City of Tarpon Springs is committed to finding a cure for myeloma and supports the treatment of its citizens that suffer from myeloma and encourages private efforts to enhance research, funding, education programs. Now therefore I, David O'Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2015 as myeloma awareness month. Uh, I think we have someone in the audience, Ms. Rosemary, um, Kibbe Lu- Lusk?
Lusk.
I had it all down too.
Thank you so very much. No, thank you very much.
Well, thank you. Next, we have, uh, proclamation for Girl Scout, uh, week. And this proclamation reads, City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, whereas, uh, March 12th, 2015 marks the 103rd anniversary of Girl Scouts of the USA founded by Juliette Gordon-Low in 1912 in Savannah, Georgia. And whereas throughout its distinguished history, Girl Scouting has inspired millions of girls and women with the highest ideals of character, conduct, uh, and character. And whereas girls discover, connect, and take action to make their local communities and the world a better place. And whereas more than 3.2 million current Girl Scout members nationwide will be celebrating 103 years of this American tradition, with 59 million women who are former Girl Scouts and living proof of the impact of this amazing movement. Now therefore I, David O'Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, do hereby applaud the commitment, uh, of Girl Scouting, uh, has made to America's girls and proudly proclaim the week of March 8th through the 14th, 2015 as Girl Scout Week. And I think we have Ms. Weaver, troop leader, here. Uh, Girl Scout Troop 1142.
You can say something if you want to. Talk about the Girl Scout cookies? Yes, so. You're welcome. They tell me March 9th is it for Girl Scout cookies, so better get them quick.
We have one more proclamation. This is, uh, procurement month. Uh, this proclamation reads, whereas, uh, public procurement profession plays a significant role in efficiency and effectiveness of both government and business and whereas in addition to the purchase of goods, services, procurement adds value to the organization by performing functions such as executing, implementing, and administering contracts, developing strategic procurement strategies, cultivating working relationship with suppliers, and other departments within the organization. Whereas public procurement professions in the City of Tarpon Springs Government and in other public and private organizations have tremendous influence on the economic condition in the United States with accumulated purchasing power running to billions of dollars. And whereas the procurement, uh, Services Division in the City of Tarpon Springs is committed to provide high caliber strategic, uh, logistical, and operational support to all departments within the City of Tarpon Springs. Whereas the procurement services division in the City of Tarpon Springs recognizes, supports, and practices the public procurement values and guiding principles of accountability, ethics, and partiality, professionalism, service transparency, established by the Institute for Public Procurement as fundamental tenants of the public procurement profession. And whereas NIGP has proclaimed this month of March as purchasing month to further expand the awareness of procurement professionals' role to the government officials, the general public, business, and corporate leaders. Now therefore I, David O'Archie, by virtue of authority vested in me as the mayor of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, do hereby proclaim the month of March 2015 as procurement month. In the City of Tarpon Springs, I urge all citizens to join the commission and recognize the role of procurement and materials management profession within business, industry, and government. Mr. Jacobs. All right, all right. Uh, we now go to our consent agenda, uh, minutes, February 17th, 2015, regular sessions, attorney fees, Thompson, Seismow, Gonzalez, and hearing, LLP invoice number 78606, Zinsol, uh, invoice, uh, law invoice 13895. And we've got special events, Holy Friday procession, St. Nicholas Greek Orthodox Cathedral, that's April 10th, Fish Earth Day Recreation Division, April 11th, uh, Sponge Dog Arts and Crafts Show Merchants Association, April 25th through the 26th, uh, D is Car Shows for Charity Merchants Association, that's May 2nd, uh, 2015, which we'll pull for discussion. And 7 is our, uh, award RFP number 150047-P-R-S, 2015 Playground Projects, 8 is award file number 150073-N-RS, Public Safety Health Screens. Now, it is approved increase to bid number 140049-C-CM, uh, HVAC Repairs and Maintenance, uh, 10 is extend, uh, Pinellas County Cooperative Contract number one, uh, number 090-0092-P, CR Auction Services, 11 is, uh, renew file number 070061, Purchase of Library Materials Throughout State of Florida Contract Number 715-001-07-1. And we have an addendum, uh, what's that for the next one? Oh, that's the, that's the, I, oh, addendum one of, uh, award file number 150080-C-JJ Playground Equipment Through the U.S. Communities Purchasing Alliance Master Agreement, uh, number 110179. If we can get a motion for everything itself for, uh, D.
Motion to approve.
Could I ask you a question real quick?
Yes.
Uh, just on the addendum, um, I, I saw the memo. I understand that it's, uh, related to the splash park. I was just curious, I, I guess this is playground equipment. Is this within the splash park, or is this outside the splash park?
Uh, no, we just got, finished completing our pavilion for the side for picnics, birthday parties. Um, the reason we're coming this fast, there's, there was an opportunity on purchase at a very good rate, probably saving $7,000 to $8,000. Um, once we got the pavilion in, we saw there was plenty of space in back of it, um, to be able to, and again, hopefully for the summer, we'll divert when some of the people are picnicking or what and doing it. Some of the playground crowd, when they're doing that, it'll be drying off on the playground and kind of relieve it. This playground opportunity came up because it's a brand, brand new playground, and we can entirely use recreational impact monies, um, to pay for it and stuff. So, we had to wait till the pavilion got in, and we had a requirements, it fits, and, uh, because we got to, I think, to the 15th on this special thing.
This is primarily through the recreation?
This is all recreational impact fees to add that playground on the back, to go by and see the pavilion, it just got finished, it looks great in this playground in back of it, um, will relieve some of the splash park while people are eating and doing that and, uh.
Very good.
Get ready for this summer. That's why we wanted to move, because we know from last summer, we've got some, some challenges, but with the pavilion, um, and the ability to try not to picnic and stuff or do, they're eating around there to go there, up that, the playground.
Got you.
And, uh, we did have, we hired some engineers at no cost, um, we polled the cops and kids, and there was two choices, a playground, a special deal, and that one was the unanimous winner of the two playgrounds about functionality. So, we had some real engineers, uh, beside which playground to choose on this. So, we just want to move fast and make, of the $7,500 we'll save from going with this.
Very good, thank you. And I, I'll second the motion.
Any, uh, public comments on those items?
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Uh, the one item, Car Shows for Charity, Merchants Association.
Yeah, this is a new event for the downtown, and we did have a concern from Commissioner Seber, um, who couldn't be here tonight to express the concern. The concern is about, um, all the additional blocking off of streets than we've usually done for the event. So, um, with not having a full commission tonight, and of course her not being there to raise the thing, um, what the thoughts are were, examine, I know we've got people in the audience to talk about it, but, um, the increased need for the additional streets blocked off, and, uh, that was one of the things that she would bring up and, uh, to have a discussion with the board and possibly with the applicant. So, whether you want to do it tonight or defer it to, it's a May, it's a May one, if you want to hear from the applicant, the applicants tonight, if you want to hear it, if you wanted to wait, we have a full commission to look at it on downtown, that's left to the, left to you.
Well, my thoughts is I, you know, we always try to look at, you know, if there's a commissioner that really wants to speak to something, to defer it. If it's not going to be anything that would, uh, hinder, uh, the, uh, the event taking place, so I have no problem. Everybody else concur.
Fine. Yes, sir.
I, I certainly don't have a problem with deferring it as long as we're not going to have a problem time-wise. Um, but if there are people here that wish to speak to it, I, I don't know, from a legal standpoint, is that appropriate to allow them to do so? I certainly would like them to have that opportunity.
Yeah, it's really your pleasure, so long as the public is given opportunity to speak before you vote on it, then you'd be fine.
Thank you.
Well, if we can go to public comments, anybody that would like to speak, what we're going to do is still defer this until, uh, our next meeting, so that, uh, Commissioner Seber would have a chance to speak to us.
Hi, I'm Marta Lynn Ochoa, I'm with the Merchants Association. And the concern may have been raised because of the site map that was turned in, but the actual blocking of the roads is the same as we just had for the event of the Love Bug Fest that was approved, and we just, um, had that, um, two weekends ago. So, the confusion may have come that on the site map, it shows, um, all of Safford, both lanes being closed, when in fact, we always keep one lane open for emergency services. And Court Street, um, is shown on the map as well, um, closed from 6:00 AM to 10:00 AM. Um, it isn't so much closed, what we're doing is, we were going to funnel, um, the cars that were coming in for the event through there, so that we wouldn't be backing up on Main thoroughfares, we wouldn't be backing up on Tarpon Avenue. Um, but we can always take a look at maybe funneling them in through Safford or someplace that's more appropriate. Um, but we're just trying to make sure we don't disrupt traffic, because, um, in this, the difference between the Love Bug Festival, Vintage Car Festival, and this one, is we will have considerably more cars, um, at this event than the last, so.
If you'd like to say something, you can.
I just, um, I'm Suzanne Painter, I'm the Director of Public Relations for Car Shows for Charity. This event has been going on for seven years, this is the first time that we are bringing it to Tarpon Springs. Um, but it is, um, was called the Palm Harbor Car Show. So, um, ti- I'm not trying to be pushy, but time is of the essence, because, um, if it is not going to be approved here in Tarpon Springs, I have to find another venue. Uh, this is an event that we do every year, uh, the first weekend in May, for, to benefit USF Breast Health Program. And so, I'm not, I mean, I, I understand the concern. Uh, we have permitted in the, the Pinellas County, um, in years past, we do work very closely with the fire, the fire department in making sure that we don't block anything or don't adhere to the emergency services. So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not trying.
Well, and, and, you know, if you understand government, you understand this, is that we can't talk. I, I can't tell you why or what the commissioner would like to talk about, there's two of them that's, that's out, so I really don't have a lot of concern about this.
Okay.
And what we're talking about doing, and the city manager says that's adequate time in terms of putting on our next agenda to iron out any, uh, problems that might be there. It seems that, you know, y'all worked with, um, the merchants and the commission to alleviate any concerns, and it might be the one that you talked about, but I can't tell you since we can't talk to each other.
Right, absolutely.
Because of sunshine violations, so, and we're just doing it in, in, uh, respect to, uh, that commissioner, so.
Oh, and I under-
We're not saying, no, we don't want to do anything of that nature, it's a major hurdle. It just one of trying to hear what she might have to say, and the other commissioner might have to say, and then we could just work out whatever details it is. I, I know the last one that was there, um, last week, or the week before they all merged together.
Right.
Oh, went well, I, I didn't hear any complaints about it.
Well, really, and I think what we'll get at, I don't think it'll be a question of approval of the event. I think it may be a question, we may be required to change some things about the streets, um, make some adjustments, and, we've done a lot of adjustments before, so moving cars other places, or, or opening up one area and finding a place for the cars. So, I don't think it's, it's going to be an issue of, of vote to do the event, it just may be an issue of, of where we're blocking off, if there's a better plan. So, I, so I don't think, I don't think the worry about you're going to be hit, you know, with six weeks before the event and no place to go, there just may be one or two of those lanes we'll have to open up, and then we'll have to work together to find, uh, a different place to accompany those cars and put them.
And we're, and we're absolutely accommodating to that, because we worked, like I said, uh, we've been in Palm Harbor for the last six years. Uh, we just finished an event here in Tarpon Springs for Officer Conduct as well. So, um, no, we're definitely, we understand that, and we understand street closures and, and how to adapt to it, and how to make sure that the fire rescue can get in, and-
And maybe that map confused, and what we'll do is, we'll make sure, we, before the next meeting, work with anybody, the police or anything, to look at the issue, we'll look at some issues and get a better map out, get a better set and stuff, and look at that before the two-week meeting. But again, I don't think you're going to have any problem getting the event approved, we just might need to-
Okay.
We just might need to adjust a closure or two, I don't think many, it may just be one or two adjustments, so.
Right, and I think that Sergeant Miller and I have talked briefly about, um, looking at a little bit different, bringing them in a little different, because we're looking at probably 250 to 300 cars, so, you know, we're, we're trying to maximize the best use of the streets.
So, that's the only thing, and like I said, we'll get, Sergeant Miller, we'll have a better map and a better layout, so all, everybody can see it and be comfortable if we need to make some adjustments. So, again, I don't think you have to worry about looking for another place for event, we just may need to adjust at the next meeting, the approval of closures.
Perfect.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other public comments? And, uh, thank you for your, uh, patience and understanding about this issue, so. Uh, do we need a motion to defer this?
Yes.
So, we can get that, motion.
I move to defer consent agenda item 6D to, uh, March 17th. Is that correct? Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Uh, next item we have is ordinance resolution, items 12, 13, 14 will be discussed together but voted on separately. Uh, first item is item number 12, ordinance 2014-18, application 1433, vacating a portion of Pine Street right-of-way east of US 19, the Jasmine Cypress Trails, and this is second reading.
ordinance 2014-18, ordinance City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, vacating right-of-way for a portion of Pine Street, measuring 978 feet from Jasmine Ave, heading west, providing for recordation of the public records of Pinellas County, and providing an effective date, it's a second reading of ordinance 2014-18 by Title Only. The ordinance was published in the Tampa Bay Times by Title Only on January 16, 2015. I'll read the additional resolutions on items 12 and 13, or 13 and 14, Mr. Mayor, if that's okay with you.
Go ahead.
Resolution 2015-04, resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application 14-74 for an alternative dimension plan, conditional use permit approval for a multi-family housing project to be located along Jasmine Avenue, between Spruce Street and Tarpon Avenue, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing an effective date, it's resolution 2015-04 by Title Only. Resolution 2015-01, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application 14-09 for site plan approval for a multi-family housing project to be located along Jasmine Avenue between Spruce Street and Tarpon Avenue, providing for findings, providing for a certificate of concurrence, providing for conditions, and providing an effective date. These applications are quasi-judicial in nature, I'll make a brief statement on the quasi-judicial process and swear in the witnesses. In a quasi-judicial proceeding, the commission acts in a quasi-judicial rather than legislative capacity at such a hearing, it is not the commission's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. The commission is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented, and apply those findings of fact to previously, previously established criteria contained in the city's code of ordinances. The commission may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If that evidence shows that the applicant has met the criteria established by the code, that the commission is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. If that evidence demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the code, then the commission is required by law to find against the applicant. All witnesses must give their testimony under oath, persons testifying at the hearing must give their name and address for the record. Testimony and questioning of this hearing must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues in consideration. City staff will present its testimony and evidence first. The applicant will then present its testimony and witnesses. Applicant and staff will have the opportunity to question each other regarding their testimony. Members of the public opposing the application will be given an opportunity to present testimony. After all members of the public speaking in opposition have been heard, members of the public in support of the application will have the opportunity to present. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes. The applicant will then have an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary, after which city staff will be given an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary. Following this, the commission will consider the matter, commissioners may ask questions and witnesses, at this point in proceedings, a motion will be made, and a vote will be taken. At this time, I'll ask the commission to disclose any ex parte communications on this, these applications. Seeing none, I'd ask anyone who intends to testify this evening to please stand and be sworn. Please raise your right hand. Do you swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? Steve.
Good evening, Mayor and Commission members, Steve Crecchia with Planning and Zoning. Uh, these three items were previously before the mayor and commission on January 27th, and they were continued a couple times so that the applicant and staff could address the stormwater design for the project. Uh, with these items previously been before the commission, I'll just provide a short overview of the overall project. Uh, the property, subject property is located east of US 19 and north of Tarpon Avenue. Uh, the zoning is residential, multi-family, and land conservation. Uh, the development plan is for a 95 townhome development proposed on 16.5 acres. And a development is proposed in two phases, uh, phase one, approximately the northern half of the property consisting of 38 lots, and a phase two, the southern half, consisting of about 57 lots. Uh, the three applications tonight are to facilitate the development of this townhome project. Uh, the first application is the vacation, the second reading for, uh, the vacation of the Pine Street right-of-way, the 978-foot portion. Uh, as determined in the first reading, uh, staff finds the vacation meets the review criteria established in section 216.01 of the Land Development Code, in that this right-of-way is not needed for utilities or for access purposes. Uh, as such, the staff recommendation is for approval of the vacation. Uh, the second application before you tonight is the conditional use permit for the alternative dimension plan. In studying this property, given the challenges presented by the wetlands on-site, uh, the pa- and the power line easement, it was, was determined that an alternative dimension plan was appropriate for this property. Uh, in reviewing the application, and the review criteria established in section 209.01 of the Land Development Code, uh, we find this proposal for the alternative dimension plan is consistent with the comprehensive plan, our Land Development Code, and that the townhome development is an appropriate use for the property given its land use and zoning, and that the design of the project will be compatible with its surrounding area and the environment. Uh, staff and the planning and support, Planning and Zoning Board are recommending approval of this conditional use. The third application is application for site plan, and, and again, that's 95 townhome units on the 16.5 acres. Uh, we have about seven and a half acres of open space with proposal for private streets and utilities. Uh, when this application previously became before the mayor and commissioners, it was for approval of both phases, phases one and two. Uh, since that last commission meeting, it was determined that the best course of action would be to proceed with the approval of phase one only. Uh, phase one was determined to be operation- Phase 1 was determined to be operationally self-sufficient in terms of the utilities, the access, and a stormwater design. This also allowed the property owner to proceed forward with development of those lots in Phase 1. The amending the approval to Phase 1 also gives applicant and the property owner additional time to address the stormwater improvements for Phase 2, and to enter into a development agreement which will address the configuration, the timing, and the funding of those stormwater improvements for Phase 2. For Phase 1, staff finds that it does meet the review criteria as established in Section 210.04 of the Land Development Code, we find Phase 1 is consistent with the comprehensive plan and Land Development Code, and with concurrency management for the provision of city utilities and services. Staff and the Planning and Zoning Board are recommending approval of the Phase 1 site plan. Mayor, commissioners, that concludes my portion of the presentation. I'll be available later for any questions, as will Bob Robertson, who can address any stormwater questions.
Any other questions? Questions for staff? Any questions for staff by the applicant? Does the applicant wish to make a presentation?
Good evening, my name is Bill Conrad, 3617 Town Avenue, Newport Ritchie, Florida, and I, just coming back tonight, Mr. Mayor and commissioners, and I appreciate the work that we've done with staff, and I know that we've been back a few times, but I think the result has been positive. We've had adequate time to address the key issues and concerns that were brought up in the past, and we've worked with staff and the city's engineer, and of course, our engineer in addressing the key issues. So, I think we have addressed the issues that were before us before, and I think we're now ready to proceed with Phase 1, and Phase 2 will address the other issues that need to be addressed, so. And I'm here, and our engineer is here, and the owner is here to address any questions. And then, just in conclusion, we really would like to thank staff for the good work that they've done. This sometime difficult, little challenging project, but I think we're there.
No questions?
Okay, thank you.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to the application? Members of the public wishing to speak in support? Closing statements by either party? Mr. Mayor.
There are no questions, and she only entertain a motion?
You need to take these one at a time, so why don't we start with the?
Yeah, the first one is, ordinance 2014-18, application 1433, vacating a portion of Pine Street right-of-way east of US 19, the Jasmine Street.
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item 13, Resolution 2015-04, application 1474 Cypress Trail Conditional Use.
Move for approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Commissioner Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Item 14 is Resolution 2015-01, application 14-09 Cypress Trail Site Plan.
As, I'm sorry, Mayor, if I may ask a question? As part of the motion, is it appropriate to stipulate that we're only speaking about Phase 1?
You can, Mr. Vice Mayor, the resolution provides for it in its text.
So, it's not necessary?
Not necessary.
I move for approval.
Second.
Roll call.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. Thank you, gentlemen, the staff for working this out. Next item we have is miscellaneous, that's appointment to Public Art Committee. We've been notified that Ms. Sharon Patterson has resigned as alternate one, in addition, Ms. Barbara Snipper has turned out, and Ms. Murphy's term expires on October 31st, 2014, but she's eligible for reappointment. Also, we've been asked that current member Lynn Pearson be moved from private citizen category to visual art professional category. So, there's a recommendation to reappoint Susan Murphy to another term that will expire October 31st, 2017, and appoint, I guess, Sherri Orr to fill the un-inspired term of Barbara Snipper, that also will expire October 31st, 2017, and move Lynn Pearson to the visual art professional. Can we get a motion to?
So moved?
Second.
Any public comments on this? Roll call.
Mr. Banther?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Larson?
Yes.
Mayor Archie?
Yes. This concludes our agenda, and Chief?
No comments, Mayor.
No comments.
City manager?
Yes, sir.
Madam Clerk?
Nothing. It's good to see everybody.
It's good to have you here. Commissioner Banther?
No comments, sir.
Vice Mayor?
No comments, thank you.
I don't have any comments, unless I can see that clock back there, I see that's 7:05, we're adjourned.
Get you a digital clock.
I know, I light it up, it's dark up there.
We do need better lighting on the clock.